Thank you for being with us tonight. It's almost 5:30, but I'm gonna go ahead and call our meeting of the Greenwood County Council, this June 17th meeting to order. The Greenwood County Council, your council has been in executive session since 4:00 PM. We've been entertaining seven matters, I believe, and for the benefit of public transparency, I'm gonna ask the county manager to please state to the public the reasons that we were in executive session. Mr. Chappell.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Ms. Chairman and members of council, we entered into executive session for the following seven matters. Three legal matters, one pertaining to a tax issue on Highway 10, two lawsuits pertaining to the sheriff's office, one contractual matter involving the McCormick area transit, and three economic development matters currently known as Project Piranha, Dues, and Kingsfish.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And coming out of that, I believe we do have action that needs to be taken, so I will ask first that we entertain a motion to come out of executive session and then take that matter into consideration.
Subtle, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Motion from Ms. Templeton, the second from Ms. Griffin, all in favor. That is so ordered.
Mr. Chairman, coming out of executive session, I'd like to make a motion, please.
Please.
I move the county council Wade Greenwood County Procurement Policy 10.4 to name Davis and void the county's engineer record for work related to Project Kingsfish.
Counsel, you heard the motion. I'll entertain a second of that motion.
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Templeton. Any discussion in this matter? If not, all in favor signify. That is unanimous and so ordered. Thank you. As always, we will begin our meeting, ladies and gentlemen, with the invocation, District and three councilwoman, Mr. Johanna Bishop will do that, and then we will honor our nation with the pledge of allegiance to our flag. If you would stand, please, if you can. Thank you.
Father, in the name of Jesus, I just want to thank you so much for this day. I thank you for your many blessings. Lord, I thank you for county council, and I thank you for Greenwood. Lord, I thank you for each and every individual who works for the county, and I just thank you for each and every individual who even lives in Greenwood County. Lord, I ask for special blessings upon our country and upon our world. And Lord, as we get ready to make decisions for Greenwood, I ask that you help us to be good stewards. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Counsel, I trust that you've had the opportunity to review our meetings from our June 3rd meeting, and if so, I'll entertain a motion that we approve those minutes, please.
Motion approved.
Motion by Ms. Miller.
Second.
Second by Ms. Griffin, all in favor. That is so ordered. Be entered into the record. Thank you. Ms. McIntyre, do we have any requests this evening for public comment?
No, sir.
None. Thank you, ma'am. We have two presentations that we would like to bring forward tonight. The first being an update of the Conestee Dam project. Mr. Kelly Lowry has notified us that he had a flat tire on his way to Greenwood, and Kelly's traveling, so if it meets with approval, counsel, we're gonna push that back until Kelly's arrival. And our second presentation tonight is of a 2025 CICI award for community impact honoring the ES Foundry. Mr. James Bateman, our Economic Development Director, and Ms. Abby Banks, our Public Information Officer, will give a presentation on that, please. Don't be bashful.
Thank you, Chairman, and members of council. I'm gonna ask Lionel Moss to join us at the podium here from the company that we're going to recognize. The CC awards are an annual award from the Trade and Industry Development publication. That is a site selection magazine for industrial recruitment and retention. This is the second time that Greenwood County has received this award, the first in 2023 for the EA Sweene project, and this year for ES Foundry. It's a solar cell manufacturer that has gone into the former Fujifilm campus. Lionel Moss is the General Manager of Operations for ES Foundry, and he's gonna bring some remarks from the company. I want to point out in these 2025 CC awards for community investment that we have received for Greenwood County Economic Development and ES Foundry, that it was the only recipient in the state of South Carolina. There are 30 projects in all, 15 corporate investment, which are the largest corporate investment projects announced in the United States over the past year, and 15 for community impact, those that are having the most significant impact on the communities in which they locate. Only recipient in South Carolina of those 15, and of all 15, ES Foundry is creating the fifth most jobs than any of those with 500 positions. And we wanted to present a certificate to Lionel and to ES Foundry, and we also have one present to this council for Greenwood County Economic Development. Mr. Moss.
Lionel, before you make your comments, let me just say that, as I said to you earlier, we're very proud to have you with us tonight. Recognizing ES Foundry as the winner of this award, folks, is a very big deal. As Jane said, this is the second time that Greenwood County has had a part in recognizing one of our clients, industrial clients. I want to emphasize again, too, it's a national honor. It celebrates projects that make a meaningful economic and community impact, and we're thrilled that ES Foundry, that your investment in Greenwood County has earned this recognition, as Jane said, second time. I think that really highlights the great work that's being done by the Greenwood County Economic Development Office and Abby's support of that and her marketing and promotion. So, at this time, please, comments.
Sure, sure. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Lemon. So, first of all, good evening, members of the county council, Steve Guest and community members. I'm truly honored this evening to stand here tonight to accept this award for corporate investment and community impact on behalf of ES Foundry Corp. This recognition means a great deal to us. It sure does. And I want to extend my deepest gratitude to the county council and everyone who has supported us along the way. This award affirms our commitment to not only advancing clean energy solutions, but also making a meaningful difference in the community where we operate. Our journey has been made possible through strong partnerships, and you know, I have a list as long as my arm, and so many names I'd like to mention, but honestly, you know, Greenwood Metro, Duke Power, Dex Power, Tomato Power, Regency Park, so many CCNM, so many midsize and large businesses have been great support to get us out the gate pretty fast. We've been in production for five months now with a significant ramp up, so we really embrace and appreciate those partnerships. Dedicated employees, one thing I mentioned earlier, to some folk, we have just about doubled staffing in the past two months. We surpassed 300 local hires, low single-digit turnover, which is phenomenal, and then we have more than 16 international engineers and folk supporting the capability building the local. We're just midway through Phase 1 of our expansion, so more to come. Sincerely appreciate the help and also the support for local recruiting and hiring. Of course, the support of the local community is highly valued. We look forward to working closely with all of you as we build a brighter, cleaner, and more prosperous future together. Once again, I am extremely honored to be here.
Well, we're honored to have you. Thank you very much. Counsel, any comments or discussion, anything, any questions you'd like to ask? If not, thank you again for being with us. Very honored to have you. Thank you.
Before I ask the vice chairman, who spoke at ribbon cutting for ES Foundry, to come down and join us for the certificate presentation, I also want to note that one recent Trade and Industry Development recognized Greenwood County Economic Development and ES Foundry this award was the impact they were having, the significant timing of it, committing to hire 500 people, already over 300 local hires, at a time when Ascend Performance Materials was closing, and the opportunity to retain that talent and reemploy many of those people, and the timing was such at that ribbon cutting that was held just days before the closure of Ascend, that many of those last employees were able to walk out of one job with the legacy industry and walk into an innovative company and go to work for ES Foundry. And that's thanks to Lionel and his team for connecting with, connection that we made with Ascend and putting those people back to work in Greenwood.
Sure, Lionel, great work. Abby, would it be okay if the entire council comes down, participates in this underact? Is that okay?
Yeah.
The council, if you will, please. That's great partnership, great day. You know what I always say, today Greenwood grows greater. Thank you. We're gonna move into old business now while we wait on Kelly's arrival. Our first order of old business, ordinance 2025-12, providing for the adoption of fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, of the operating capital budgets for the operation of the government of Greenwood County. The identification of the sources of anticipated revenue included taxes necessary to meet the financial requirements of the budgets adopted, the levy and collection of taxes necessary to meet all county purposes, including bonding and debt in this of the Greenwood County Metropolitan District payable during the aforementioned fiscal year. The expenditure of the aforementioned taxes and other revenues coming to Greenwood County during the aforementioned fiscal year, the establishment of rates, fees, and other matters relating to the Greenwood County. Our treasurer, Ms. Stephanie Doran, will give information on that. This is third and final reading.
So, I want to just provide some updates that have occurred since your second reading of the budget. First, in the general fund, as requested at the last meeting, the deputy county manager, the funds were reduced to accommodate moving implementation of the internal equity for employees that are covered under the general fund to the first full pay period in FY '26. Those funds, the remaining funds for the position remain in the budget but will not be expended until we are directed under by county council as it relates to any potential reorganization for that, related to that. Voters registration, the state has given additional stipend funds for the board, and so we increased the revenue and related expenses that we'll be receiving from the state of South Carolina for that. Our grounds maintenance, our Parks and Recreation Department realized that they needed some additional funds related to grounds maintenance due to the increased volume of usage at the Greenwood Recreational Complex, so we did add $3,000 for that. The clerk of court's office had some, thought they were gonna hire somebody at a lower amount and hired them at a different amount. It was still within this year's budgeted funds, so we had to make an adjustment for that. We had duplication of mobile phones in the Human Resources Department. We removed that. And then in our assessor's office, there was a scheduled promotion of a trainee upon successfully passing a test that needed to be added. So, those are the changes to the general fund. In our other funds, we made adjustments to lake management, road operations, hospitality tax, and the landfill fund related to moving, the implementation of the internal equity to the first full pay period in FY '26. Within the fire fund, we had to make some adjustments related to the firefighters' hourly rates were incorrect, and so rather than having 1,030,000 of the fund balance being used to cover the firetruck, it will only be 1,7507. The victim services fund, we added to that use of fund balance to move the implementation of internal equity to the first full pay period. We also adjusted the revenue in the School Resource Officer Grant Fund to hopefully cover the implementation of that internal equity. I think my screen's cut off on that, but we also transferred a recycle truck that we have budgeted in the current fiscal year due to some procurement issue delays. We were not, we're not gonna be able to make that purchase, and so we've transferred that. So, we should have a surplus in FY '25, and we'll use fund balance in FY '26 to cover the purchase of that recycle truck. So, those are the changes that were made since second reading, and this budget was put out on your Google Drive for you this afternoon.
Counsel, we talked about it, thank you, Stephanie. We talked about it second reading, that there was, there's been a lot, a lot of thoughtful deliberation in regard to this budget, probably more, more conversation than we have had in my nine years of service, and I think that's been extremely valuable. We made some changes that we, that we approved or pushed forward last time. I would like to entertain a motion that we, that we vote on this budget as provided that these changes have been put before us. Mr. Chairman, I'll offer your motion that we approved third reading as provided. Second. So, we have a motion by Mr. Templeton, a second by the vice chairman. Before we vote on this, any questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
I am, and I publicly stated this, I'm the person that asked a lot of questions, so I appreciate everybody's patience. One of my concerns previously was around the understanding the request for additional firefighters, and I was, you know, quite thrilled that for me to move forward with that, the support that if people were asking me, I wanted to understand the real need for that. So, we did get additional information, as noted in the last council meeting, we did, and we were actually told if we had questions, we could contact Chief Holmes. So, here, yeah, there he is. So, I did, I reached out to him, and I want to thank him. He spent about an hour and a half with me going over everything. So, I have a map now of every fire station, so for the public to know that, we basically have 23 fire stations in Greenwood County. 10 of them are owned by the county, 13 are not county-owned, so that's 23 in total. And then of those, if I mistake something, Chief, please correct me, three of them are staffed, okay, and others are volunteer-based. I want everybody to understand that. We then talked about response time, which was very important and an eye-opener for me, and the amount of difference in the time for people to, that are staffed to get in that truck and get on the road and get to my house versus somebody who's in a volunteer district, for that person to respond and get into that fire station and get into those vehicles, big difference in response time. So, with that information, I did ask the county treasurer to give us a scenario. If, if we have to at some point look at raising fees, what would that impact be? And I know that I looked at the Miller House, and it would be $1.23 a month is the impact for me. So, I can live with that, knowing that my fellow citizens in the far reaches of Greenwood County can have a better response time and close to a response time than I may have, because I'm very close to a fire station as well with a volunteer service. So, with that, I just want to offer those comments to support that implementation of the hiring of those six firemen. And with that said, I also would like to think that maybe at some point we can have more discussion with the sheriff's office, too, because I know he's had an 18% increase in calls as well over the last couple of years. So, just to put that out there, that maybe we could have additional conversation at some point. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. I will make the comment, too, that I think sometimes it may be lost on the public, that our fire fee funds our fire service, primarily funds our fire service, correct, Chief? Our fire fee. And I, as one taxpayer, not speaking now as the county council chairman, but as one taxpayer, believe that that fire fee is probably low. The cost of running the county fire service is, is high. It's growing with every year. For any that don't know, one firetruck costs us about $1 million. And I think as one member of council and a taxpayer, that we probably need to look at increasing that fire fee. But we've had great conversation about it, and we appreciate that. Counsel, any other comments or questions? We have a motion before us in the second to approve our budget as it has been provided to us this evening with the treasurer's changes. Are we ready to vote? Then I would ask you all in favor of approving as provided. Please signify. Any opposed? That passes on a six, six to one approval. Thank you very much. Ordinance B, 2025-13, providing for a levy of taxes for educational purposes in Greenwood County, appropriation for the said purposes of the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, and other matters relating thereto. Ms. Doran, please.
There are no changes from the second reading. Again, as a reminder, there are no changes to the mileage requests from the school districts.
No changes. I'll be motion to approve, Mr. Chairman. Have a motion approved by Mr. Templeton, second by the vice chairman. Any questions or discussions before we vote, counsel?
I just want to make a comment, Mr. Chairman. Have not spoken with District 51, but have had conversations with both 50 and 52, and just want to commend the finance officers and the superintendents and the board there for all they did.
Vice chairman, the people in back are asking you to move a little closer to your microphone.
Excuse me, not a problem for me, but no problem. So, having had those conversations with the finance people, and I would think Stephanie would agree with this, they've done a tremendous job trying to recover what's kind of been lost on them, and thinking about those kids first and what we should, I mean, all we are is just kind of approving what they've recommended, but I know they went through a lot of heartache and a lot of, a lot of time trying to recover that money. So, kudos to all three of the school districts for finding different ways to make up the difference. Is that a good way to put it? Stephanie?
I think that's a great way to put it.
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you very much. Counsel, what is your pleasure? We've got a motion, a motion and a second. All in favor? That is so ordered unanimously. Thank you. Item C, ordinance 2025-17, create special purpose tax district for the Ferncliff subdivision to accomplish road drainage improvements and other matters related thereto. The county attorney will give detail on this, please.
Hi. I will first point out that Mr. Danny Talent is here. He is the HOA president at Ferncliff right now. As we all know, the HOA and the special tax, tax district are not the same thing, but Mr. Talent has whipped up the necessary signatures to have this done by ordinance, which is a very high bar in the special tax district, and you have to have 75% of, at least 75% of those that represent that much value of those parcels, which is kind of a hard concept to describe for the first time. But it's a double bar of 75%. Mr. Talent spent a lot of time getting all these signatures together so that there wouldn't have to be a special election, that you could do this by ordinance without having to use those resources. So, this, this creates the special tax district and talks about the governments of it, which is essentially under state law in our section, in our policy 10.5, which we are all familiar with and have spent some time with recently. So, this is second reading. We're, we're not doing public hearing until third reading just because of a timing issue, and we wanted to get this done more quickly rather than more slowly so that Ferncliff could then move on to use their, their status as a special tax district to accomplish some needed road maintenance and, and upgrades. So, I thank Mr. Talent for being here in case you need him. He has done some hard work and really, really boots on the ground, doing, doing some hard work. So, this is here for you for second reading. We'll do public hearing next time if, if this passes.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. And before we go further, Danny, I really want to thank you, because I think that, that the work you have done, as Ms. Penny stated, and the strategy, strategy that you employed to partner with the county to get this done. I personally believe that this is exactly what special purpose tax districts were intended for. We've had a lot of conversation during my time on council as to have there been some in the past that probably weren't exactly as they were intended, but this one, I think, is exactly in keeping with what was intended. So, thank you so much for that work.
Well, thank you all, first of all, because when I was in Florida last, I submitted Ferncliff as for potential to go to vote and ask both the county manager and the county attorney if I could proceed with enough votes to do the special tax district, which is gonna save the county money as far as special election goes. So, thank you guys, first of all, and, and kudos to, to the vice chair, because he, he's helped me, and to both the county manager and the county attorney have been extraordinary in helping me to get my bearings and figure out what I needed to do, but, but, but this lady right here has put in just as much work as I have. This is my wife, Kim. She's, she's, she was with me at almost every single individual meeting that I've had with every homeowner. So, not only thank you, you guys, but this, she's, she's the magic behind, the magician. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kim. Counsel, you've heard the attorney's explanation. Any comments or questions from any of you?
Ms. Chairman, I do have one. Does the county have a list of the people who signed that was in favor? I guess 75%, so there was some that was probably not in favor. So, we have for our record the name.
So do we have for our record the nays and nays and for our record?
We have the yays. I don't know that we have a nay record, but we have the yays.
A number that...
Yes, and the assessor's staff has gone over the percentage to make sure that it meets the threshold. I did not do the math. Somebody more qualified than me did that, and they, they say that it meets the seventy-five percent threshold in both aspects.
Thank you.
Yep.
Counsel, Mr. Brew, do you have any comments on this?
Yeah, I was just going to say, reiterate your remarks, and Danny reached out to me because it's in my district, and I agree with you. That's pretty much the reason that we established these tax districts, and everything went about it professionally, Mr. Chapel's involvement, and we've had personnel go out and look at the problem, and I thought the whole process went extremely well. Appreciate you guys working, and that was a very smart move to recognize your wife because I was going to say, I knew he was a smart man, but that shit just how smart he was.
She's the magic behind the district.
All right. I'll offer your motion since this is in my district, Mr. Chairman. Second. Have a motion, seconded by Ms. Bishop, all in favor? And that is so ordered. Thank you very much. We're going to move now, folks, into a series of public hearings. We have about, we have about three public hearings that we need to carry out tonight. And let, let me tell you how I'm going to do this. We're going to, we're going to move into our public hearing. We're going to move through the items individually, one at a time, and we will then have discussion on those at the close of the, of the hearings, and then we will vote them individually. Everybody okay with that? Okay. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion, please, that we, that we move into public hearing.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion by Mr. Templeton, a second by Ms. Griffin, all in favor, and we are now in public hearing. Our first, our first, first public hearing ordinance, uh, ordinance 2025-14, to amend the Greenwood County zoning map as and if amended, so that one parcel of land totaling approximately nine point seven five acres at 301 Mosley Road in Greenwood County, South Carolina, changes from FA Forest Agricultural to RDD Rural Development District. Our county planning director, Ms. Carol Coleman, please give us details on that, Carol.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you stated, there we are. This is on Mosley Road. You can see the parcel on the left picture that shows the outline of it. You can see some of the pieces around it. On the right, I wanted to include the zoning map that shows that it is currently FA for Forest Agricultural, and then outside of it is RDD. This is within the area that was covered by the Callison Comprehensive zoning a few years back. It is to the far western region of it, but they have a valid reason for asking for this. If we go back here, actually, I'll go onto this one. The property itself is nine point seven five acres. So the minimum lot size in forest agriculture is five acres, which means it's family property. They don't have enough to split out a lot because they don't have ten acres. So that's the, that's why they made the request. This is a lot, view of the lot from Mosley Road. You can look at the end of Mosley Road onto, onto the right, and then there's a neighbor across the road. Future land use map you can see is all basically agricultural and conservation. That might be less I have on that. But again, the reason for this request is so that they, they have the ability to split it out. I want to show you this map again though, because you can see where Mosley Road comes down, kind of in the middle there. It's, it's only paved to a certain extent, so there's not going to be an ability to, RDD allows a minimum lot size of an acre, but you also have to have frontage on a paved road in order to create additional lots. So unless they extend the road and improve it, they're limited as to how many lots they can create. So the goal was to create a second lot so that two family members could have a house. There's a house on there now, but at least two family members could have a house, but they are limited as to how much subdivision they can do.
Thank you. I think I recall from, from first reading, Carol, that you, and from the planning and zoning meeting I attended, that the intention is only for family members to live on, on the subdivided parcel.
Yes.
And so at this time, I'll ask if there's anyone present here tonight that wants to come forward and speak in favor of this. Any family members need to come forward, speak in favor of this? If so, come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Janee Arnold. I'm speaking on the behalf of 301 Mosley Road because I am the great granddaughter of my great-grandfather, who had passed about a couple of years ago. And my great-grandfather, he, this was all his land. And he got older and then he left it to my grandmother, which is, she's present now. But right now, my grandmother, she stays on the land, and then on 301, that's where he used to stay. But right now, he's, no one's staying there right now. But the goal is to have a house in between where he used to stay and my grandmother, because my grandmother, she's getting up in age, and we're a very tight-knit family. So as she's getting up in age, you know, either me or I have a brother, older brother, we would like to be close to our grandmother. And I also have a child. Me and my husband had our first child, so I want her to be close to her, that's going to be her great, that's her great-grandmother. So so pretty much we just want to be a tight-knit family, and it used to be RDD, which is agriculture. And I didn't know anything about, anything about agriculture. So I just want to put it to great use and keep my grandfather's legacy alive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Arnold. We appreciate it. I take it you're speaking on behalf of your entire family?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh-oh, got another family member who wants to come forward. State your name and address for the record, please, sir.
My name is Curtis Crowe, and I stayed right there beside my, my granddaddy. Well, my granddaddy left to my mama, me and my mama, so we took care of him, and he left us the land. And I feel like the way I see houses going up and side by side on the, out there on the lake, why can't I put, as long as I keep my land and stuff neat and tidy like I told, said before? It don't take, I've been farming all my, all my life. I helped my granddaddy farm that land. So what I'm saying is, it don't take that much land to even farm. You could farm on one acre of land and just get just as much off that one acre as you can, fifteen to twenty acres. But we got just as much land it is down there. Some of them ain't even got nothing but two acres, not even two acres down there, and they living down there, so I don't see why it's so difficult that I would like, like for my niece and nephew to be closer to me and my mama.
Yeah, Mr. Curtis, I think I remember that you all, in owning almost ten acres, you have more land than most people surrounding you.
Yes.
So I, I think, I think counsel understands that. Thank you, sir. We appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
Having heard from the family, I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience that wants to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Seeing none, seeing none, and before I move on, Ms. Carol, if I, if I recall, this comes to us recommended approval from planning and zoning.
Yes, and also staff made a recommendation for approval.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. So we'll move now into the second segment of our public hearing. Ordinance, ordinance B, 2025-15, to amend the Greenwood County zoning map as and if amended, so that one parcel of land totaling approximately one hundred ninety-five point four five acres on Nation Road in Greenwood County, South Carolina, changes from Ag. 3 Agricultural to FA Forest Agriculture. Ms. Carol, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And this is slightly the opposite of what we just heard. The opposite, the last one, they wanted to be able to add more people to a certain area, therefore they wanted to go away from the FA. These applicants want to go to the FA because they want to be able to create a nature or wildlife preserve on their property. They plan to live there, they have some rescue pets that they want to keep there, and they want to make sure they're doing everything legally. So this also goes along with it, is very similar. You've got RDD out there, you've got, there's not a lot of FA out there, but FA, as I said earlier, is the most restrictive we've got with the five acre minimum, but it's also the one that requires, or that allows that, the allowance for the wildlife preserve. And you can see the flood area, which is obvious where you would think it would be, and these are pictures of it. So you can see it's actually in a developed area near Wareshaws. But the property itself is, is really pretty. The future land uses for natural conservation, so that's in keeping with what we had anticipated with that comprehensive plan, I would say. And you can open it up from there if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. So at this time, I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience here tonight to speak in favor of this request? Seeing none, I'll ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to this request? Seeing none, we'll move to item C. Ordinance 2025-16, to amend the Greenwood County zoning ordinance as it pertains to the regulation standards related to chickens and poultry in the residential districts R1 to R3 of Greenwood County. Ms. Carol.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and if some of you can attest to the fact that we have received a number of calls requesting this. Current language in our ordinance, in the agricultural districts, you can have chickens, you can have other animals, and it's not really a problem. In the residential districts in Greenwood County, you can have animals on your property, the R districts, if you have a minimum of three acres. The issue is that most people don't have over three acres. So the city has had this, a very similar ordinance in place for quite some time, and it seems to work, so I thought, why don't we look at doing, using something that we already know works in the districts where it would be the most needed? I recommended the R1, R2, and R3 districts. R1, minimum lot size is fifteen thousand square feet. R2, the minimum lot size is ten thousand square feet, and R3 drops down to about seven thousand square feet. Didn't think we should really go below that, and anyway, if you have a large enough piece, piece of property in any of the R districts, three acres or more, I think you're covered. So the stipulation is you can have up to six chickens, hens only, no roosters. You have to keep them in the rear yard in a coop or a pen, and they're not allowed to be free-range or to roam. That's been working quite well in the city. We thought it was a good chance to put it in the county. I still think the three acre minimum is needed if you're going to have larger animals. So this is only applying to chickens.
Very discriminatory towards the roosters, but...
If you're a neighbor, you understand. I'll be honest, I live in the city and there's a rooster in my neighborhood, but he doesn't bother me. I don't complain.
The great chicken debate. Okay, all right. Hearing this explanation, is there anyone in the audience here to speak in favor of this ordinance? Come forward, please, sir. State your name and address for the record when you get through the voting.
Good afternoon, counsel. My name is Steve Rhodes, and I am at 108 Sade Wood Road in Miss Katherine's district. Sade Wood is not even a wide road, it is just a paved road. And in this particular area, there is nothing but a curved section of the road, chickens on one side, and they stay across the road in the other man's yard that we're trying to work on getting these chickens resolved. And I'm asking for counsel to vote that we can reduce the kitchen floor through the community.
So you're, you're speaking in favor of this ordinance or in opposition to it?
In favor of the ordinance.
In favor.
To limit the chickens into the areas that we just...
Eleven even number, okay, Mr. Steve. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Anyone else to speak in favor? Seeing none, is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion that we close the public hearing. Motion from Mr. Templeton, second from Ms. Bishop, all in favor of closing the public hearing, and that's so ordered. Thank you. So counsel, what we, what we will do now is move back to item A, First Order of Business and Public Hearing, ordinance 2025-14, reminding you that that was a zoning, that was a zoning map change of 301 Mosley Road. Any comments or questions before we, before I entertain, well, let me entertain a motion, bird, that we, that we vote on this.
Motion approved.
Motion by Ms. Miller, second by Ms. Bishop. Comments or questions?
I'm just curious how you get the neighbor to pose in that picture earlier.
That was our favorite picture today. And he walked out there, too.
Any further comments or questions? All in favor of this ordinance? That's unanimous and so ordered. Thank you. Item B, ordinance 2025-15, to amend the Greenwood County zoning map. This is one hundred ninety-five point four five acres on Nation Road. Do I have a motion on this, please?
Motion approved.
Motion by Ms. Miller, second by Ms. Bishop. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor? That's unanimous and so ordered. Thank you. Item C, ordinance 2025-16, zoning ordinance pertaining to chickens. All your motions approved. Motion by Mr. Templeton, second by Ms. Bishop. Any comments or discussion? I'm so disappointed. All in favor of this ordinance? And that is unanimous. The chickens win. Thank you.
Thank you.
The chickens win. That's going to be my line.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, my goodness. Kelly has still not arrived, I don't believe, Dan. Kelly's, Kelly's still trying to get here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're going to move now into new business, please. Item A is consideration appointment of special purpose tax district commissioners for the following subdivision, which is following Ben. Ms. Stephanie, Dorn will give us information on that, please.
These two appointments are to replace people, commissioners that are moving out of the area. And so the first one is to appoint Tyler Moss for a four-year term and to appoint Don Ryerson for a two-year term. And I'm specifying the terms because if you recall, in your recently changed policy on special tax districts, we're addressing these that aren't properly staggered. And we would recommend that you make these, approve these appointments.
Any discussion on these matters, counsel?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Mr. Allison, second by Mr. Templeton, all in favor of this appointments? And that is unanimous and so ordered. Thank you. New business, item B, consideration of appointment of library board trustees. Ms. McIntyre, I think you're going to cover that for us, please.
I can, or I can ask Tiffany. Tiffany is...
Oh, Tiffany, I'm sorry. Tiffany, you're here. Why don't you...
Tiffany is on her. Okay, well, then I'll be fair.
Tiffany, that's how I feel every other Tuesday. Susan, why don't you cover that for us?
I'll take care of that. Okay, so I was given by the, by the board chair, Ms. Chalmers, the three, District 2 District, four District 6, who are expired terms in May of this, this, May 2025. Mr. Landreth for District 2 and Ms. Blackmore for District 6 are both willing to be reappointed, so they're up to be reappointed. Mr. Laura's Hill, District 4, will no longer be able to serve, and so we're asking for a nomination or consideration of somebody to fill that District 4 spot.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to hold on District 6 as well.
All right, sir. So we're going to be looking for two to appoint, and we're going to make a reappointment of one tonight then. So having heard Ms. McIntyre's information for us there, I'll entertain a motion that we approve as, as was requested. That will be to Ms. Miller. We'll be bringing forward a nomination at a future date, as will Mr. Templeton. So we'll vote only tonight on the reappointment of Ronnie Landreth.
And offer your motion to approve.
Second motion by Mr. Allison, second by Mr. Templeton. Any comment or discussion on these appointments before we vote? All in favor? That's unanimous and so ordered. Thank you. Item C is the consideration of the stipend sum in the form of agreement between owner and design builder for the North Greenwood Industrial Park in Phase 2 of our site development and our spec building. Mr. Bateman, our economic development director, will give details, please, James.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening again, members of council. The selection... The selection committee for the Phase 2 site development and speculative building at your North Greenwood Industrial Park unanimously ranked THS Constructors' first out of three valid bids that were received for architectural, engineering, construction, and project management services. That recommendation was approved by county council at your April 15 meeting in the amount of $9,295,000 to develop these three sites and build a new building, build a network of roads and a new entrance to the park. It's all included in the scope of this project. Performance and payment bond pricing was provided as an alternate by THS Constructors because some of their clients choose to require performance and payment bonding and others do not. So included that as an alternate in, in their proposal. However, that amount of $79,500 for their performance and payment bond was not captured in the pricing proposal submitted in OpenGov, which is the new digital procurement platform that the county is using to bid out county projects. As you recall, this was the very first project that the county has utilized this new digital procurement platform. So in the recommendation that was presented to council and the $9,295,000, that is the reason why that $79,500 was not included. And so we're coming back to council because performance and payment bonding is required on Greenwood County projects, especially of this magnitude, to want to, to ensure the completion of this project. So we're coming back to council, asking that you authorize the manager to execute an agreement with THS Constructors as a general contractor for a revised contractual amount of $9,374,500. That amount is fully funded by your 2016 capital project collections, the proceeds from the sale of your first speculative building at North Greenwood Industrial Park, which was constructed using 2016 penny sales tax monies, and state and utility grants make up the budget for that project. I will also state that with the addition of the performance and payment bond, that $9.3 million stipulated sum, THS Constructors is still the low bid from the three valid bids that were received. So it is in budget, and they're still the low bid with the addition of that bonding.
Thank you, James. So all you're asking us to do tonight, James, is basically to amend what we had already agreed to, the $9,374,500, correct?
Yes, sir.
Counsel, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll agree with that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second it. This motion by Ms. Miller, second by Mr. Templeton. Any comments or discussion in this regard? I have one question. A call, I received a call last week, I think. Do you know, is Anderson Construction doing any associated work for THS?
They are.
They are? What, they're doing grading?
Yes.
Grading?
They're doing the grading package, which is significant for how much earthwork is required on this project.
Right, okay.
THS had the most local participation of any of the three valid bids that we received, Anderson being one of those local contractors.
State that again, they had the most, what?
The most local participation.
Oh, local participation?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you very much, I'm happy to hear that. All right, council, having heard James's explanation, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have a motion, it's second. We prepared, no comments or discussion? All in favor is presented? That's unanimous and so ordered, thank you, James. Yes, Kelly's still changing flat tires?
No, he's, he's passed break on the lake, and he's, we have law enforcement in here, so I won't say he's going as fast as he can. I'll just say he's trying, I'll just say he's getting, he's on his way.
So I'll tell you what, let's do, he'll, he will be here soon, and we won't adjourn until Kelly gets here, because we really appreciate him coming tonight. But is it okay with council if we go ahead and give district reports? Is that all right? So if that's the case, Ms. Griffin, would you please start District 1?
Thank you, Ms. Jim. Like to say good evening to each and every one of you, and I'm just happy that you are all able to make it tonight. And we have had a couple events in Promsland Community, which is in District 1, so everything went well with that. So we just look forward to all things going great in District 1. And that is my report.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin. Mr. Allison, District 2.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Real quick, I want to say thank you to the folks that helped us do some trash pickup on the South Main corridor coming in 25 to Greenwood last Tuesday, 9:00 a.m. We had several people show up and help us. And usually, what I do is I start at the hotspot and work my way north of 25. And I've done that for several years, and I was pleasantly surprised that I got about halfway down the road, and I was picking up very little trash, because there was very little trash to pick up. So a couple of us actually went and relocated somewhere else to pick up somewhere else. So, and even in that area was better. So I do see some improvements in, in, in the trash on that main corridor coming into Greenwood down on 25 South and then 72 going, you know, going out towards Fairgrounds. So I appreciate the folks helping me. I think our program is working a major difference in four years, three or four years that I've seen the last three years at least, in the amount of trash that's laying on the side of roads in those areas that I have worked in. I know it's a combination of things. I think we're doing some law enforcement stuff. I think we're paying some folks now, we got payroll folks that are picking up certain areas. And I would like to know when that area was picked up, just to see if, if maybe it wasn't that bad, just because somebody picked it up before I got there. I wouldn't think we'd schedule that area if it would have been, but would like to know how long it had been since someone had, had been assigned to that area. It was a major significance, significant difference in the amount of litter that was in that area. So thanks to the folks that helped, that some will show up and help us, and I do appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That is my report.
Yeah, Councilman Allison, Amber Napear does such an excellent job of coordinating those events, I can't imagine that she scheduled you right on top of a recently cleaned up road. So I hope you're right in your assessment that our programs are working. Thank you, Ms. Allison. Ms. Bishop?
I think, I think he is right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Amber, she helped me with my litter, litter pickup on June the 14th. We actually started out at 8:30 at the Restoration Worship Center. I thank Pastor Foster for allowing us to start there. We actually had 16 volunteers. I was so excited. I had 16 volunteers. I was missing some of my, my road dogs, but hey. We had, the Little Warriors were there, Keith Greenwood County Beautiful were there, they were there, Residents from Rain Tree was there, Greenwood South Carolina Rotary was there, and my, two of my younger children were there. I was excited, and we had a good time cleaning, and we did not get rained on. I was concerned about that. But we ended up with 35 bags of litter. And we, I mean, we got a lot done, and I think we, Amber, she is just so excellent. She went through and had, knew like the different areas, the different roads we should work on. And we just divided up, and we actually left before we, yeah, before the two hours was up. So, and we had done a good job, and I was excited about it. So that is my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Before we move on, I want to recognize Representative McCravy. John, you, you dropped in a little while ago. Do you have anything you need to say to council while we're, while we're waiting on Kelly?
Not really, Chairman, but I'm honored to be here, and it's good to see government in action.
Thank you, sir.
So we thank you all for what you do.
And I thank you, and I want to thank you again for your support on that hard money and to Representative McCravy, who you all will know, we have $118,000 of sports equipment that we needed, and the representative was helpful, as was the entire delegation, getting that money released to Greenwood County just a month or so. So thank you for that, John, we appreciate it. District 4, Ms. Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just very briefly, I know Mr. Templeton is going to give a probably a deeper dive, but I want to congratulate the Festival, the Festival of Flowers event, the Chamber, amazing. I participated in several different events, and the Kid Fest was one of them that coincided with the ribbon cutting for our new Greenwood County Parks and Rec. The only complaint I had, which is a good complaint, was that there was no parking for some folks because it was so well attended. My own children and grandchildren circled the entire complex and could not find a close to park. So I'll pass that along to Trentsey, but very nice event, thank you all. And I did have a chance to meet Blue, the Bloodhound, my new buddy, and my joke is that he smelled up me really good, because if I get lost, he'd come find me.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. We hope you don't get lost. Vice Chairman Crowe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I think it's important to recognize those who are here in attendance. Thank you to the citizens, and thank you to Sheriff's Department, Sheriff Kelly, for your attendance, as well as Fire Department personnel and libraries represented as well. Thank you for that. Attended the 96 Town Council meeting last night. Also want to remind everyone that the 2025 Festival of Stars starts Thursday, June 26, goes through Saturday, June 28. We have a flyer up here, it's not my district, but the historic day, the dedication at the Benjamin Maze. Susan, you can correct me if I'm wrong exactly. Museum expansion, ribbon cutting and dedication is this Friday, June the 20th at 11:00 a.m.
That's correct. Yeah, she's got the information.
Thank you, sorry, Abby.
Abby does, I'm sorry. You're good.
So I would encourage all who are able to please attend this historic event, actually. I was going to say thanks to Kelly Lowery, he's still on it, making his way here, for attending and giving the update. I think when you do hear where we're at, you'll be pleased and impressed, and that, you know, I was proud to be part of the original shareholders group that began the negotiations for the new Conestee Dam. Appreciate the involvement by Representative McCravy and also Senator Billy Garrett for the pivotal role they played. To me, I think that was the epitome of citizens, government at the local and state level, all coming together for a common cause, for something that was badly needed and was identified as the second most dangerous thing in the state of South Carolina. So I appreciate all that. As always, I'd like to end on a Bible verse, Proverbs 14:15 says, "The simple believe anything, but the prudent give thought to their steps." That ends my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Crowe. Mr. Templeton, District 6?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Ms. Miller pointed out, there was a ribbon cutting on June the 7th in conjunction, at the Greenwood County Recreation Complex in conjunction with Kid Fest. It was extremely well attended, and probably the reason parking was what it was, is because it was opening day of the farmer's market. We had a 20-team volleyball tournament going on, we had a softball tournament going on, along with Kid Fest, which is all the things that we had envisioned when we kind of took on, took on this project. That next level fitness was there, putting on as well, but it was a fantastic event. Couldn't have been, couldn't have been more pleased. You know, on that note, Brad and his staff have done such a great job in the short period of time that it's been opened, marketing that facility, and Kelly and Erin are, are really working to market it and just as kind of a conversation piece, if you will, something to carry around with you. When we, when we talked about this facility, we wanted to have, you know, first-class recreational opportunities for all of our citizens, but what we also wanted to do was get into sports tourism as a, as a way to have a positive economic impact on the community. And just since February, we're at 1.1 million in economic impact on that facility, and that's, like I said, that's just since February. And, and his staff has got it booked almost every weekend from now to October. And on that note, something I didn't know until today, but I had somebody come by my office today and say, hey, we need more pickleball courts, because last night, there were 34 players at, at the pickleball court. Every Monday night, they are, they are renting, reserving whatever, four of our six courts, because that's all we'll allow them to reserve. And they're having round robin tournaments. Like I said, last night, they had 34 players in the little text group, they've got to get it together, it's got over 100 people on it. So we're getting a tremendous amount of use, and that's, like I said, that's exactly what, what we envisioned when we, when we started down this road. So couldn't be more pleased, and that is my report, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Templeton. You all, though, I think that Mr. Templeton chaired that initiative for us and worked on this thing for many years, and it's been tremendously successful. I think the economic impact, I've, I've said this before, we realized as a council that we were a geographic void, and that people said, we love coming to Greenwood because your playing surfaces are wonderful, but your amenities are terrible. Well, we fixed that now. And if I'm not mistaken, Robbie, I think Brad Cullen told me recently that we have tournaments booked, and this was a month or so ago, this conversation. Somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we had book, tournaments booked every weekend but one through the end of October.
That's accurate. And, and that, that grass field that would used to be a parking lot, you know, that was something that the committee spent a lot of time talking about, because we just felt like that was space that we could use. And, and that was the field, because we thought we could use it for outdoor concerts, we thought we could use it for, you know, movie nights, whatever, it was places for people to have a tent and picnic while their kids were playing ball, which Mr. Allison talked about, all the time he spent following his kids around. But, you know, this past, this past weekend, well, the 7th, excuse me, you know, we had, we had volleyball nets set up all over that grass field, and they had, like I said, 20 teams playing three-on-three volleyball. It was absolutely amazing to see. So thank you again, Mr. Chairman.
I'll hold mine, since Kelly is with us now. Kelly, you'll be glad, I'm going to make a motion, we buy you some new flat tires.
I appreciate it.
Yeah. Kelly, come forward, please, if you will. We really appreciate you being here tonight. Sorry you had difficulty, but thanks for making the effort. We weren't going to leave until you got here. So Kelly is going to give us a report on the success of the Conestee Dam project. Thank you again.
Certainly, and I'm sorry for being late, but...
No worries.
It's the second time I had a flat tire in under a month, so I'm wondering, what have I done wrong to displease the, the tire gods? But thank you for waiting, I do appreciate it. I actually came from the, the dam site on my way here. I had to stop to drop one of my kids off at the airport, and then I came straight to y'all. And I'm happy to report that the roller compacted concrete section of the dam, which is about 99% of it, is completely finished, we're about a year and a half ahead of schedule, which is fantastic. I have to give a lot of credit to the crew that's performing the work out there, a group called Keywit Infrastructure South out of Charleston, that are very clever in that they under promise and over deliver. So we fully expected that we wouldn't be in this position until next year, this time at the earliest, and more likely than that, later than that still, towards the end of next year. So I'm very proud of what we've accomplished. We, we have a few things left to complete in order to, to really wrap it up. The, the question I'm, I'm being asked frequently now is since the roller compacted concrete portion of it is finished, are we out of the woods? Is the risk 100% abated? And I'd say it's 99% abated. The next thing we have to do is, is drop a, a steel bulkhead over the culvert. Right now, you know, a, a natural question occurs of how do you, how do you build a dam across a river that's still flowing? Well, it's a good question, but you have to put a culvert underneath it, and then you build the dam across it. And at the end of it, you block the culvert up, backfill it with concrete, and then the river will fill the space between the old dam and the new dam. And that's where we are now. We, we've begun preparations, they've already begun fabrication of that bulkhead, and while we're waiting for that, there's one little smaller wall that gets built on top of the roller compacted concrete, it's called the parapet wall, it's about four feet high, and that's what the water will actually flow over. So the, the remaining bits and pieces that we have will probably take a month and a half to do the construction and to pour the conventional concrete. We're already in the process of disassembling and demobilizing... We're already in the process of disassembling and demobilizing the concrete plant that we built on site, which is one of the ways we were able to perform the task so quickly. We, we didn't rely on anybody else to deliver us concrete because you can have supply interruptions, you could have irregularities in the quality of what's being provided. So we built a plan of our own on site and had the materials delivered and, um, always had enough in, in hand to go for three days in case any deliveries were missed. And that way we could control, uh, the timing of the supply and the quality of what we were getting, which we tested every single day. So we know that the materials are in there. We know that they're solid. We know their compaction rates. And we have a hundred percent confidence in the, uh, quality of the structure that's been built there. It, it goes without saying that it took a lot of people giving a lot of energy, a lot of time, a lot of commitment. But everyone involved from the design phase to the construction crews, they've been out there working twenty-four seven for the last five weeks, every single night. And I've, I've spent several nights with them out there. Um, they would continue working until six in the morning and pull the machines off in the morning and then build the forms up another four feet and that following night, they'd lay it right back down. It's a lot of commitment and a lot of care. We talked about it repeatedly that we're not doing this just to build, it's not just building another project. That's not what we're doing. It's not a, an apartment complex or, or something else. It's, it's a structure that's designed to protect hundreds of thousands of South Carolinians downstream. Everybody I'm looking at in this room was relying on that project being performed and having it performed on time. And they all believed in that. They believed in it a hundred percent. And I tell them routinely how grateful I am because I'm the face of this thing, but they're the ones doing the work and y'all are benefiting from it. And I get a lot of gratification out of that. It really is a good feeling. Um, I expect that we'll continue the demobilization. We'll do those last bits of, of conventional concrete, the training walls on the north bank to make sure if water does ride high enough, it doesn't scour underneath the dam and create an erosion problem. Uh, but we, we should see everything completed, including grading of the, of the ground, ground back to where it was before we began by the end of this calendar year. Which is.
Outstanding.
Amaze, is outstanding. I agree with you. Yes, sir. So that's, that, that's the full report. I, I'm sorry to have made you wait so long just to hear such a short thing, but the, the content of what I had to say is, to me, astonishing. And I wanted to be here to deliver that message to you personally that we're, we're not out of the woods yet. As I said the other day, we're, but we're just inches out from, from the edge. So we will get it done and, and y'all can breathe, you can already breathe the big sigh of relief. If something, if the worst happened today and we needed to do an emergency response to close the culvert, we could do that within about two hours. So, um, we can all breathe the good sigh of relief.
Well, Kelly, we're certainly grateful to you for your leadership and, and taking this thing to, to fruition. Um, it's, it has been a remarkable project. It certainly was, was a tremendous need. As Vice Chairman said, identified as the second highest risk factor in the state of South Carolina. Counsel, I'm sure you'd like to make comments, uh, if you would, please.
The funny thing too is having met Kelly at the very first shareholders meeting, didn't know who he was, is your natural job is an environmental attorney, correct? And he's turned into a project manager for a forty-seven million dollar project. And, um, you know, I saw Representative McCravy shaking his head back there. I just think this was the perfect storm of everything coming together about the, you know, the citizens, the government, the local, the state level and, you know, and Dave Hargit gets kudos for the twenty years plus that he was ringing the bell and, and, uh, once, once this thing started taking form. And, you know, you had the, uh, the folks from Greenwood County, Lawrence County, Rewa, Lawrence County Water Sewer Commission, Greenwood CPW, Greenwood County, City of Greenville, Greenville County and City of Greenville, um, all involved and sitting in the room together with a common goal. And it, you know, came all the way back to the original Kleinschmidt recommendation of what, alternative number nine, I believe?
Alternative nine is the one we focused on. We actually ended up building alternative six. It's a little closer to that, uh, because it's a roller compacted concrete design that's got about a sixty-foot interstitial space between the two. But, um, option nine is the one that had the traction. And then we modified the design a little bit to make it, uh, to make us, to make it so we could build it more quickly and control the costs a little bit better. So yes, the Kleinschmidt study was, was the beginning really and the impetus and the sort of the, the real content for what we ended up building.
Well, again, from a Greenwood County perspective and a Dane perspective, you know, thank you so much for your leadership and what all you did. Um, I was able to have a driver's seat and see it firsthand and I very, very appreciate it as I'm sure most residents here in Greenwood County feel that way as well.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would like to say thank you, uh, to Councilman Pruitt for his support, to John McCravy, for Billy Garrett, for all the players who, without whom we wouldn't be here today.
Absolutely. It was a great team effort.
Yes, sir.
Kelly, it truly was. We thank you again. Thank you.
No problem.
Any other comments or questions before Kerry goes and plugs his tire? Sorry you had that difficulty.
That's all right. It's not a problem.
If there's nothing else, I'll, I'll move to my district report and, uh, hopefully wrap this meeting up. Um, I want to first thank, um, all of our, all of our divisions of the county government, um, for their participation and certainly staff and this council, uh, for the participation in the budget process. And it's about five to six months of really tedious undertaking. And I, I do believe that, that, um, in my experience, as I've said, there was more really thoughtful consideration and questions asked about aspects of the process than I've ever experienced before. And I think that's a good thing, a very good thing. It's probably one of the most important processes that we undertake all year. It's all important, but nothing is more important than protecting the taxpayers, than balancing our budget and, and just doing it, doing things the right way. And I know a lot of effort was put into that, the county attorney, the county manager, but certainly our treasurer who does a remarkable job. She must, she must make money because I don't know where she finds the ability to do some of the things that we ask her to do. And we certainly, and we certainly ask that some things be done, challenge, uh, some things in this process. So thanks to each of you. Um, it seems like every, every meeting, I can't conclude my remarks without recognizing Amber Napier. And Councilman Allison talked about that he believes our anti-litter efforts are improving. I think they are improving. Um, but last Friday, Abby, was it last Friday? I believe it was last Friday, was National Tarp Your Load Anti-Litter Day. And I had the, uh, had the pleasure of being out at Buck Level Road at the convenience center and the county was handing out free tarts to anyone that came in with a pickup truck with un, 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 uh, untarted load. And that was very well received by our citizens. And, uh, Amber sent me an email and some of you may have seen it in the last few days. And we, I think we've got some more tarts and we're going to do another one. Abby, is that right? And of course Abby was out there taking pictures and marketing and doing her thing. So Abby, we appreciate you doing that as well. Um, I don't really have anything else. Ms. McIntyre, do you have anything for council? Nothing?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Manager, do you have anything to add?
I, I'll only say briefly two things. One, you see the beginnings of our new technology program is going in. So Tom and Shane have done a great job with our IT staff. The goal will be by your July first meeting to have it all completed and operational. So that's a significant project that's been kind of moving, starting to stop for a while. But I think Tom's got it moving in the right direction now. So. Secondly, the move to what is being known, being called Trailer Park Plaza is now complete. Uh, admin, the treasurer's office and HR all in one trailer. We have voted registration to other economic developments at the BA Center. So the notice to proceed has begun on the renovation and demolition at Park Plaza.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mattel Attorney?
I appreciate y'all letting me go, be, letting me be gone for two weeks. Uh, it was incredible to be with my family and not have to worry about work and be refreshed when I come back. And I'm happy to be back. And just again, appreciate the opportunity to be gone for such a long time. Um, and I'm, I'm ready to get started on what comes next.
You know, Carson, things were incredibly quiet from the legal side that two weeks you were gone. I don't know if that's good or bad for you.
Maybe I'm just the one causing all the problems.
I don't think so. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being there tonight. We'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you.